...1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this meeting was posted on February 6, 2012. Said notice is also posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, Star Ledger, North Jersey Herald, News, and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Formal action will be taken. Do you stand for the flex? Lou, fill in the second.
...to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold your role, please.
This is Dan Trent-Fort here. This is Lynn here. This is Siskesky.
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mrs. Russo.
Here.
Mrs. Scisado.
Here.
Mr. Gupta.
Here.
Start with the President's report. I'm going to read some remarks. The primary purpose of tonight's special meeting is to discuss and decide whether or not to move board elections to November. Before starting, I will review our quarterly Republicans' consumptions since the board members have already received this information. The facts surrounding such a move. They involve procedure to move the elections. The election can be moved in one of three ways: resolution passed by the Board of Education, resolution passed by the commissioners, public approval of a referendum petitioned by 15 percent of those who voted in the previous presidential election. February 17 is the state mandated deadline for moving it this year, hence the need for this special meeting. The previous meetings, we've talked about it, and we said we have to make a decision by the end of February. That's been moved up because what the state has said. If moved, it's a minimum of four years before we can move it again. The election will be controlled under the control of the county clerk. As of February 12, 277, or 51 percent of the eligible districts have moved to November elections. Eight in Essex County. My understanding is there are a number of boards who are meeting tonight and tomorrow night to decide. If moved to a November election, two items would be on the ballot: school board candidates and cap override referendums. School board candidates by law will be placed in a separate section of the ballot and will not be aligned with any party or partisan candidates. Any proposed cap override referendums, that is tentative amounts in excess of 2 percent cap, budget amounts within the cap, will be on the ballot. Budgeted amounts within the cap will not appear on the ballot and be part of the voting process. Impact on board members. The reorganization meeting would be the first week of January following the November election. The interim period will provide time for new members' orientation. Voting by board members on numerous resolutions, appointments, calendars, et cetera impacting the following school year would remain in May by giving new members time to become well-versed in how they affect the district. The term of the current trustees would be extended to the January reorganization meeting. Impact on the budget process. The schedule slash process for preparing the budget does not change, including adoption of the tentative budget by the board, submission of the tentative budget to the county superintendent for his approval, presentation of the tentative budget to the public, adoption of the final budget by the board. If the tentative budget is within the 2 percent cap, it becomes the budget after the above approvals. Any excess over the 2 percent cap becomes a provisional budget until approved by voters in November. If defeated, the cap amount becomes the budget. If approved, the excess is incorporated into the budget. Fiscal impact. The district will only be charged with any incremental costs, expected to be minimal if any, for the November elections since the county already covers the costs of board polling workers, transportation machines, printing of ballots, et cetera. If the election remains in April, the district will be charged its share of the cost of the election. Over the past three years, that cost has averaged approximately $30,000. It is anticipated that because of the significant number of districts which have opted to move to November, the cost will increase to as much as $45,000. Other impacts. Construction will not have to be interrupted for another half day for the April election. Those are the facts that as I see them surrounding this decision. I believe I've covered all of those parameters surrounding potential move to November. It is up to each board member to determine which course of action, approve or not approve the resolution, if she feels is in the best interest or altered interest of the district. We'll now have the hearing of the citizens. Now come to the portion of the meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. This section is, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak, more than once only after all those wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address each and every time we address the board. The first person wishing to speak, please step forward.
Kevin Giorgetti, 597 Prospect Street. My only concern here is by taking away the vote of the budget, everybody's under the assumption that if we're under the 2 percent cap, that is a fiscally responsible budget. Last year, you guys came within a 2 percent cap, and we instituted pay to participate. What will we do if we're a little bit over? Will we, again, add additional fees? Will we add lab fees, people, and so forth? So, we're under this presumption that if we're under the cap, it's a great budget. Everybody says, well, the county will look at it. In reality, at the end of the day, if everybody's under the cap, the county's going to say, you're under the cap, they're not going to look at it, and we all know that. So, I think there's more to this decision than $30,000. You have a $55 million budget, and we're concerned about $30,000 or $45,000. We have other costs that are probably going through the roof, and we don't make decisions as quick as we're doing on this one. So, again, you have to really look at it. At the end of the day, within 2 percent doesn't mean you have a great budget. You really have to focus on where the money is being spent, not just that we're within a cap at the end of the day. I mean, we could have a situation where money is going to cover our overhead for, you know, insurance premiums, you know, pensions, and we're still getting less and less into the classroom. That doesn't make it a good budget. So, again, when you're voting, think about your responsibility to have to look at everything, not only the cap, where the money is being spent, and again, just giving it away. And at the end of the day, five people here can take away the right. At the last lecture, 5,500 people voted on the budget. Five of you can take that right away from 5,500. And I know the law gives you the right, but we're rushing to do something that there's no rush to do. You don't have to do it this election. You can sit back, look at what the other 50, you know, 50 percent of districts have gone through. It just seems that we're rushing to do something that probably needs a little more input from the public. Here we have a special meeting. Public probably doesn't know about it. It's not at the normal time. It's moved to 6 o'clock. So, again, it's sort of, it gives me the chance of trying to push this through and knocking what the public has to say. You're hearing one side from the administration, so just take all these things over your vote, and hopefully that, you know, you keep that, the people can vote on the budget. Thank you.
Ryan, 87, down there. Okay, I mean, I look at the situation, we look at the pros and cons. I'm not going to say it here. I mean, I know there's positives to both ends. Mr. Laszlo, I understand. Looks like you've got a 2 percent, you know, basically free money where you don't have to worry about working into your budget. As an educator, I can definitely see that. My concern is this board right here, part of your responsibility, based on past transgressions that you guys didn't commit, past mistakes that have been made by previous administration, part of your responsibility is to win back the trust of the people. You, by you guys disallowing the vote of the budget, you're just going to further drive away between you nine and the $30,000 members out there. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but clearly, we're underrepresented. There isn't a large audience here. Give it some time. We can do this next year, you know, without worrying about the presidential election. We can get through this so that come next year, the public, you know, can then have their say. I really, I feel that this few people, I know, I've come here for two years, I know this room generally isn't jam-packed with people, but I feel once the community gets word of this, you know, it's just going to, like I said, it's going to drive away from between the $30,000 and the $9,000. You know, it's really, that's my major concern. You know, I obviously, you know, I have, I have my own senior, and I want to be a board member, and I want to continue to build that trust with the community, and I feel that doing this is going to be really, really difficult to win back, win back the trust. That's it.
Thank you.
Vince LaCurtio, 14 Coiman. I want to echo the sentiments of the two previous speakers. It just seems to me it's like, almost like a rush for it. I agree, $30,000 and the $45,000 compared to the budget just dropped in a bucket, and it's not really going to move the needle either way. I believe, and my biggest concern is put into the general election in November, especially on a presidential election, that it's going to allow partisan politics to get involved. You know, they've always had a history of not being partisan, trying to keep partisan out of our political politics. And my concern is, a lot of work has been done to try to go in a better direction with the board and the school system the past couple of years, and I'd hate to see, you know, having partisan politics come in where you're going to have self-serving, sleazeball politics, you know, pollinate our, what we're trying to accomplish here. So, that's all I want to share with you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not of this section of the meeting. Specifically, move the administrative resolution.
President, we've moved the resolution on to move an election to November, as written.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Flair. Thank you, Mr. Russo. Let me give a little, I've been working on this actually, all that. At our meeting of January 23, I requested that we have a board retreat to discuss this openly, the board prior to being scheduled for a vote. On January 30, an email was sent out by the superintendent to check on the availability of members for a board retreat at 5:30 on the 13th, not a meeting. I received a call from our superintendent on Wednesday, February 2, about a meeting for February 13. When this date was first spoken about initially to see if we were available, it was for a retreat. I asked for that retreat, and superintendent said, and I quote him, "Jim has the five votes, so we can discuss it at the night of 13th at the meeting." This does not allow for board of ed members to interact separately after a discussion as a group. I asked why we could still not have a retreat in this prior next week, and the superintendent said it was not needed, we'd discuss it at the opening meeting on the 13th. I also informed the superintendent, I would be writing an editorial to the paper. On January 6, I spoke to Megan Grant of Nutley Sun, and they'd still not received notice of this meeting. On January 7, this meeting was posted on the board of ed website, less than one week to the meeting. I know it meets the legal requirements. I know we meant the legal requirements of this meeting, but it does not give us true transparency with the public that Alexis, the open and transparent as we sit here today. There are 22 towns in Essex, and you talked about numbers, and six are nonpartisan townships. Also, of the over 528 school districts, there's only 75 districts in the entire state that are communities with nonpartisan elections, one of those being Nutley. Of the eight districts in Essex that chose to move, only one nonpartisan town in Essex chose to move that, and it's West Orange. So, out of 22 towns, there's six nonpartisan, eight change. The percentage shows that less, less nonpartisan towns want their township influenced by partisan politics. Let's talk about the $30,000 we currently spend. I've heard the board members, you said it tonight, saying they go $40,000, $46,000. The county clerk said, and I've spoken to him now several times, that it may increase. There is no projected number from the county clerk. But the cost does change. It's not known until it's worked out, but that is going through. It could go up. Completely agree. We have 20 polling districts. Here's some details on Nutley. We have 20 polling districts, and there are five workers, each polling place in Nutley for an election. Each one receives $200, and they are mostly seniors, actually, some depend on money from the elections. They work those elections for that money. That equates to $20,000 of the 30 we currently talk about. First, that is a constant. So, that leaves $10,000 out of our current 30 that covers machine delivery and county costs. I had a conversation about the machines and trying to figure out the costs, so I said, let's split that $5,000 each way right now. Those are the variables if we keep the election in April. The $20,000 is a constant. There's no way that if we keep it in April, that we can hit $40,000 or $46,000. The $20,000 is a constant number. We only spent $10,000 between machines and the ballots, and that would still depend, yes, it could be increased. So, I'll give you that it may increase $5,000 if we take it. Machines will probably stay almost a constant. It's the county's cost of the petitions, the ballots, and their work. So, let's say they double it. I see a high right now at $35,000 if I use all those figures. The commissioners had the ability for over a year to move the nonpartisan commission election to November, but chose not so. That Nutley does not change and get into partisan elections. The township could have saved $50,000, and to that point, none of the nonpartisan towns in Essex town in that former government chose to move. Some may, it's every four years, but it truly equates more to the Board of Education. They say that because, well, it's $50,000 every four years. The $50,000 the board spends on every election is up 23.5 percent of the township budget, where the school board has spent $30,000, but we have 50 percent of the budget. So, truly, the $50,000 in a singular year affects the commission election more, the commission budget more than does ours. Some board members are saying, why do we need to vote on the budget when it's only the 2 percent cap law? And one of the things you stated, and I didn't put it there, or let's keep it up, where you stated if defeated the cap, you can do the exemption. Exemption's in the current law. Even in April, you could put that exemption off, and it doesn't fail. So, exemption's not new if you move to November. The exemption occurs already. And, excuse me, I lost my track here. And we, oh, and we cannot exceed that anyhow. Well, I've been around the government a while, and I'm sure Charlie will back me up on this. The first cap laws were enacted in 1981 by Governor Tom King and then Senator President Carmen Arreola. I was laid off at that time and knew what caps meant, and Charlie was around. A few years later, when Governor King and Senator Arreola were no longer there, they abolished the caps in the state of New Jersey. In the 1990s, they brought back the 4 percent cap law, and that was still not enough. It had problems. Even during my time there, there were exceptions to the cap. So, the 2 percent that is there now can be changed by a vote of the legislature at any time. Once we change the day of our election, we're locked in for four years. During those four years, there will be a governor's race, two assembly elections, and a senate election. With those changes occurring, excuse me, with those changes, before we may want to change back, future boards will be able to increase the budget 4 percent or more. And then we will do that because, say, in the third year, the government changes to a 4 percent cap law. We're able to do 4 percent without going to the voters, and that could occur. Potentially, political funds. I will tell you, I used my own election, as I had Garfield and Leonardson in my district, and some two of my campaigns in this district for 36 were over a billion dollars each. Every town was partisan. We assisted in paying for campaign literature, campaign signs. And Leonardson, Garfield, and Senator Sarlow, you could call him, would say, we need to change these nonpartisan towns. There's nobody on the ballot with us. We can't spend any money there. We can't do signs. We can't do literature. Well, I'm telling you that the law does not allow, even though it would be separate on the machine, for partisan and nonpartisan can be on the literature together and can be on the science together. Right now, there's an affordability factor to running for the board of ed race in Nutley, probably the only elected office that's affordable. For $3,000, $5,000 that much you want to spend, you could run and be an average citizen to run an election for a board of ed race. Well, I think it's an affordable election, Tom. Compared to what we spend on any other election that is out there, it is affordable. We will be changing that if you want to be on the ballot and you want money, you will be going and getting either Democratic vote of money, taking money for signs and literature to raise that. I think it's important we continue protecting and keeping Nutley the good community that we have today, and this quick vote on such an important issue, I feel, is not good. I've also stated several times why we must, why we must, why must we rush and change this year? We can vote on this any year. If we wait a year, we will not be guessing on what the costs are or may become. We will be able to see how and if this affected board of education elections by watching and seeing what occurs in board of educations that have changed. We can get a report from the School Boards Association on how other elections went. And yes, we can see if partisan politics affected those elections. So, what we're truly talking about is $30,000 for this year to protect our children and the township of Nutley, and I wish we do not rush into something that we are locked into for four years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. When I, when we first dealing with this issue, I tried to look at this from my usual bent, statutory interpretation, and try to think, why did the legislature do this? Why, why did they go about, the way they went about adopting this statute, and then it got signed at the last meeting? But what was the main purpose in order to inform my decision-making on this issue? And, and what troubles me is that I never, and I didn't understand it at first, is why, how would it would impact a township like Nutley that is a wall shack, nonpartisan commission former government, that has for so many years elect its local officials and may? Why would they go ahead and put this option out there? And that's the key word, is an option. It's, the statute's written in a way to leave that option available to people, to townships like Nutley that have a commission former government, a nonpartisan government, to do what works best for its township. Unlike the statute that is originally written, which said, there shall be a school board election the third Tuesday in April, except for the year that at least I'm afraid of myself and Mr. Giorgetti ran, usually it's the third Tuesday in April, and the statute, and that applied to everyone who had an election for school boards. But the legislature left that option there, and then that made more sense finally intellectually to me. The option is still there for townships like ours, who have dedicated themselves to maintain itself as a nonpartisan township, to have an option to decide what works best for them. So, with that said, I was more comfortable in talking with people about the issue, talking with, you know, a lot of people, my neighbors, talking with members of the league, and just to try to gauge their input on what do they think? Do they want this election to be in November? Should we have people like myself, Lisa, Robert, you know, friends used to be a political friend, but Lisa, myself, all, a lot of us here are not, we're not. So, you know, Debbie was an active member of the PTO. So many of us are just, you know, this is our first foray into a political nature. We don't want to be politicians. We want to do what's best for the township. We're, we're, we did this for some reason. We all have our own little reasons, but we did it to make a difference in our kids' lives, you know, township's lives for some reason whatsoever, and, and they're not political. That's what concerns me about this statute. By moving these elections to November, you're going to prevent that PTO president who says, you know what, I want to make a difference in my kid's life, you know, your neighbor who otherwise doesn't watch, you know, CNN or Fox News back-to-back to see what's going on with all the qualities and everything, but someone who wants to make a difference from entering into it. I mean, just imagine, first entree into a political foray is going to be during the President Obama slash whoever the Republicans can put together, put up against Obama election. It's kind of daunting, and I don't think that's what we want to encourage here, and I am really, I think Nutley should be a vote, and our board should be a vote, if we're finally having a discussion about this. I looked at the townships that have, and the municipalities that have changed, and I noticed one of the towns I live in, Hunnuck, very small town, there's 2,800 people, they hold strong to 2,800 for many years. Those board of ed elections, there's probably 100 people at most that show up. They usually show up to vote down the budget, but they show up. That's, it's 100 people. They also have on their ballot every November, someone running for council, someone running for mayor. So, in a town like that, it kind of makes sense where you're not getting these huge numbers, and you have a local government official on the ballot in November to put, to move that election. I see where it works for a township like that. But for a township like us, where you have so many people so involved and so invested in this community, in the education of this community, I don't see where that makes sense. I see a disconnect. I think it's best for this township that we remain nonpartisan, and the way we show that is by voting no today. Like I said, I spoke to a lot of people. There were people that said, you know what, I want to save some money. You know, we had issues with music teachers. You know, we had those kids here last year begging us to keep the music teachers, and I don't, I did not like that one bit, and I know none of us were comfortable with that. But these are the tough decisions that we have to face as a board of ed. But again, I don't feel comfortable taking away the right of the public to, to vote on it, but, on the budget. I think that there's a, there's a reason. This is the only budget that's presented to the public to be voted on. It's our school budget. And, and I really don't feel comfortable taking that vote away from anyone. It's an important check in government. Maybe I wish, I wished the federal budget that just got proposed to be subject to a vote, I'd comment on that one, but it's not. The other issue I have is drowning out the educational issues. They're so important, there's so many issues. We were at the league last year during our election, and we discussed many issues. I mean, it's so topical, every day it was changing, and I don't think it forwards the discussion and the debate on these important educational issues by having these school board elections put in place, put in a statewide election, a national election forum. We'll just be drowning out, well, then nothing will get done positively. I mean, in April, we all focus on education. That's good. We all start talking about education. That's good. That gets things done. But by putting in November, I don't think we're going to get much done. And I have to say, a lot of people, I was surprised, people said, they, they said, well, I'm in favor of it, and then they explain to them, well, they don't get to write the vote on the budget. They say, wait a second, what are you trying to hide? What are you trying to do? And, you know what, I'm not in favor of voting at something, something like that. I don't want to create that impression. I want to create the impression that we're creating as a board, as an open board that educates one. And let me just say, I think this board has the capacity to talk about the budget in such a way and educate people that we're not going to have this issue, the concern that some towns have, like the town of Hunnuck where I grew up, where they vote down the budget every time it comes up for a vote. Those concerns are not here. I think we have, people are going to be out there speaking. We're talking about education. We're moving things forward, and we have great people in this township that are going to support us in whatever, the superintendent, whatever he wants to get done. If it's going to help the education of these students, he's going to get it. So, we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that happens. But as, as I last knew, and Freddie talked about it a little bit, the cap. Right now, the law is written, it's very curious. It doesn't say 2 percent cap, it just says state cap, and it could change. In the last three years, it's changed so many times. There was, it was 4 percent, it was 2 percent. Right before it went to 2 percent, four exceptions, like that day, everyone thought it was going to be a 2.5 percent cap with a number of exceptions. And all of a sudden, it came out of trend, and it was a hard 2 percent cap, and everyone was like, whoa. No one expected that. There's just too many unknowns for me to feel comfortable with it. So, like I said, I just want to maintain the consistency and the tradition of this township. I don't think we have to do this today. I think we have an act that, you know, a number of members of the league of women voters came up to me and asked me about this. We're very lucky to have an active league, and I suggest we have them study it for a year. We have the money budgeted this year. Why don't we do that? Why don't we, like, take a look at it, see what Fred said, see what the school boards do, see what happens on other towns, see what the impact, it is a presidential election. Let's see what happens. I'm even curious to see how people are even going to get there on the ballot. I mean, I've studied election law enough to know some people don't even make it to public question sometimes. Some, some kids go into the ballot and hit the button on some parents like myself, and you get to vote one. Fortunately, I voted for the president. The rest of our election was void for me, but I would just, I would just plead with my fellow members, if you could, just seriously consider it. I haven't, I, like I said, I have people who've said they're a favorite, but more so in this township, and it's probably because of its tradition of being a nonpartisan township, people have not been in favor of it right now. So, I would just report my core fellow board members to consider those thoughts when voting on this tonight. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to say one thing, that I, in the 15 years that I served on the board prior to my last year and a half, I probably have not received as many calls as I have about this issue. Calls that I, that I would have hoped I would have received when we were dealing with education, when we were dealing with the grading system, when we were dealing with the pay to participate, I did not, I received from Mr. Giaventi's comment... I did not, I received, from Mr. Givetti's comment, I received many, many more calls than ever thought I would receive concerning this issue. And I appreciate Mr. Sclera's input and Vicki Flynn's input tremendously. I probably agonize over this vote more than I have over issues that, in my mind, are much more important, education. I just wanted to make that comment, that I did receive, I use the Mr. Rogers term, I receive calls like you cannot believe. And I just, that's all.
Anyone else?
I'd like to echo Mr. Sclera and also Ms. Flynn's, some of their factors. When looking into this, especially the potential cost savings, the statute said that the, that the Board of Education and the County Board of Elections shall enter into agreement pursuant to the guidelines established by the Secretary of State, under which the Board of Education shall pay any agreed-upon expenses. Nothing, the Essex County Board of Elections could not provide us with any kind of estimate. In fact, when I called, they could not tell me how much they thought it might cost this year, and they couldn't even tell me how much it cost last year for the November election. So, we're really going into this blindly. We really don't know how much we will save. Secondly, we're locked in for four years. Once we, once we do this, it's four years, and we have to wait that period of time before we can make our next decision. And most importantly, moving the election to November takes away citizens' right to vote on the budget if it's at or below the tax levy cap. There is no specified percentage. If the tax levy cap changes to 4%, the public still can't vote. The budget accounts for half our taxes, how can we take away someone's right to vote? The decision directly impacts every taxpayer and voter, and as of right now, from a voter's perspective, we don't have any substantiated positive reasons to move the election. I think that the voters themselves should make this decision. I propose that if we were looking seriously toward a November election, that we put it to a public vote and ask the question on this year's April ballot.
Thank you. Anyone else? I too have to agonize over this decision, and to me, after looking at all the facts, it boils down to two things. One is the politics that are involved in the election, and the other one is the budget process. I grant that, you know, that we're a nonpartisan town, but that doesn't mean that politics have not entered into these elections. I think over the last 10 years, at least, that I, you know, when I've been more active in this thing, there have been a lot of politics involved in the school board election. Not partisan, but politics have been involved. So, whether it's in November or whether it's in April, politics can be involved. I think that the candidate can budget their money and spend it wisely and still stay within the range where they are spending now. Mailings, to me, are the most expensive part and least effective. In both of my campaigns, my second mailing was delivered the day after the election, so it didn't do me any good. I think there is, in this day of electronics, you know, there's more effective ways to get your message out there to, which has low or no cost, you know, so from the election partisan, you know, politics point of view, I discount that. So, then the establishment budget process and the vote, the ability of the public to vote on it, and their input in the budget. The process itself, up to the election point, still remains the same. And again, experience has shown me that even after the budget has been voted on, we get a lot of people come to the microphone, and we listen to them. And we listened to them before, I mean, a couple of years ago, when we wanted to outsource the power professionals, people came and we listened to them and we changed. So, if we move to November and they don't have that vote on it, it doesn't say, the public doesn't have a voice in the budget, or how the district is voting. But I think that they still will have that, and if they don't like what the board is doing, they vote the board out. You know, you're going to elect members of the board if they're not doing a good job. So, I've agonized this over a period of time, and those are my comments. And if not, full roll.
Time out. What do we call on you to vote for? To vote in favor on the resolution or to vote in favor of moving the resolution to November?
The resolution is to move it to November. A yes vote moves it, a no vote doesn't matter.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
No.
Mrs. Flynn?
No.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sclera?
No.
Mrs. Spazato?
Yes.
Mr. Cookdough?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski, we move finance resolution number one.
I move finance resolution number one, which again, I appreciate the people that are leading to listening to something that's just as important, in my opinion. Okay. Where, the second resolution is a resolution to join forces with the Township of Nutley, part of our shared services that we talked about, to share and bidding the cost of gas and electricity. The initial cost is $150 to the Board of Education, but then it puts us in a pool with the Township of Nutley where we can save quite a bit of money on our gas and electric. I still move the motion, Mr. President.
Second. Section.
I have a question.
Yes.
Last year, on one of the agendas, we were talking about saving electricity and going with NJ SBAs Alliance for Competitive Energy Services. Was that all we looked into? Would that be a greater cost savings? Because I know they just put out a report where they saved around $50 million for the 400 members.
Going into this particular pool does not exclude us from looking at any other way of saving money. So, we're going to continue to look at solar, we're going to continue to pursue the program Mitch had talked about. This just puts us into a pool with the Township of Nutley where they can auction, offer, or bid off on our gas and electric costs.
And we're not required to buy through there instead of the option, it's another bidder, we have more bidders on power, so.
All right. Thank you.
Any other motion? Full roll.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Flynn?
Yes.
My mind is up in the air, sorry about that. I know. Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sclera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazato?
Yes.
Mr. Cookdough?
Yes.
Here we go, citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this required. All statements can be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members in this room. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, and redundant, participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address, which every time you address the board, first person you want to address, please. Seeing no one, close this section, and I have a motion for adjournment. Close into adjourn. Labor. We're now going to go into the retreat of the library.